Then you can't.
You know.
And that's a call, a call.
There's just a forty minute.
Uh, we're not, and they, they were required, and they are. Maybe you're gonna be like, oh, I don't match flash mark. Uh, we will have.
Shit, that was just a good day. Really addictive to Asia.
Welcome, everybody. January edition of the 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Um, we have two commissioner, commissioners joining us virtually. Uh, Mr. JR Rixby and Ms. Yolanda Logan, are both you guys present?
Yes.
Present.
Present.
Very good, thank you. Um, all right, so the agenda for today, can we, um, has everybody had a chance? Have any changes or anything we need to do to the agenda? If there is not, can we go and get a motion on the agenda for today? There's a move in a second, all those in favor, please vote aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. JR, Ms. Yolanda. All right, um, the minutes for the December ninth meeting, are there any changes we need to make to that? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'm moved to approve the minutes. Second.
There's a second, all those in favor, please vote aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ben, do you have a staff report?
Yeah, well, one thing that, uh, we would like to do is move the March Planning Commission meeting from, uh, from that typical day of that Monday to the Thursday before, March sixth, uh, spring break. There's a lot of commissioners that, uh, travel on vacation. We have folks that are out of town, so if we can do it the week before, a few days before, I think that would help. So, are there any issues with that?
Same minutes, March the sixth.
Thursday, March the sixth, five P M. Right here.
Thursday, March sixth.
Do we need to make a motion?
That'd be great.
Yep.
Motion to move the March meeting to March sixth.
Second.
Give it to Harry.
All right, there's a second, all those in favor, please vote aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything in addition? All right, um, is there a building official report today? All right, uh, the first item is the consent agenda. This is case number three one seven three. The Blackburn Group filed a request for final plat approval for the summit phase three. Its property is located at Ed Perry Boulevard. Is there any comment at all on this? If not, we'll move on to the public hearings.
Motion, second.
Okay. Can entertain a motion to approve case number three one seven three from the consent agenda?
I can mention to per the consent agenda.
Second, all those in favor, please vote aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved, all right. This tale takes us to the public hearings. We have a reconsideration for case number three one six one. Um, that's for, uh, Andy Callicut, Oxford Farms. There was a, we had done a prior approval of this, it went to the Board of Alderman. Uh, they have asked us to reexamine it as some somewhat minor changes that they were wanting to do. Ben, take it away.
Thank you, yeah. This was previously considered by the Planning Commission. At the time, it was a request of approximately fifty-two acres, a little bit more than fifty, uh, fifty-two acres that was part of the request. Uh, since that time, the applicant has surveyed the property and we're looking at just over fifty acres. But, uh, uh, at the time, that request was for, uh, a hundred percent of the property to be rezoned from suburban residential to, uh, suburban multifamily. Uh, that, uh, was discussed and was recommended with an affirmative or supporting vote to the Mayor and Board of Alderman, six to one. Uh, since that time, this application has been before the Mayor and Board of Alderman for a first reading, a second reading and public hearing. And then at the third reading, um, there were, the applicant proposed some changes to the application. Um, the application now consists of, um, it's thirty-two acres, uh, of the total roughly fifty acres would be suburban multifamily. And eighteen acres would be neighborhood residential. So the Mayor and Board of Alderman, um, at their third reading, believe that this was enough of a change for the Planning Commission to reconsider this request. It was asked to be placed on this agenda for your consideration. You know, the same facts are there. Um, the applicant believes the, there's sufficient change, uh, in the character of neighborhood and a public need for this. They don't think it's a mistake. And so, again, this is a reconsideration of this request.
Thank you, Ben. Are there any questions from those on the commission? Or discussion?
So I guess it's just, uh, clerical, but it says five hundred and twenty, twenty-seven acres. I assume that's fifty-two point seven plus or minus.
I think it should be. Is that in the staff report?
In the planning comments, second line.
It's just, yeah, the opening comments. It later says fifty-two point seven.
It says fifty something odd. I was just making sure we need to.
Yeah, it was fifty-two point seven acres is what was considered. I think the total property now, Joe, isn't it, it's fifty point zero seven acres? Yeah, I think the decimal point just, uh, is no longer, no longer there. It is in subsequent lines, the fifty-two point seven.
I was just making sure we didn't even change that or anything.
Yeah, I, I can make that, that edit to make sure it reflects that.
Is there any further, uh, questions or comments, uh, those joining us online? Commissioners Logan and Rigby, any questions or comments?
No question.
No question.
JR, did you have a comment there?
No question, thanks.
Good. Uh, those joining us here in the audience today, is there any questions or comments related to this case? Those joining us online, is there any questions or comments related to case number three one six one? Our hearing none, uh, put this up for a motion, if there's a motion from the commission.
How do we say it?
Yeah, you're recommending body to the Mayor and Board of Alderman, so if there's a motion to recommend approval or to deny this request, that's what the motion would be.
When we approve the.
Rezoning.
Rezoning.
That's, just again, it's fifty, fifty point two acres? Fifty, fifty point zero seven acres. And it would be thirty-two of it is suburban multifamily and eighteen of it is neighborhood residential.
Second.
There's a second, all those in favor, please vote aye. Aye. Commissioner Logan. Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect.
Logan votes aye.
Thank you, Ms. Logan.
Can you all hear me well?
Ma'am.
Can you all hear me well?
We can, yes ma'am. We got your vote, thank you. All right. That concludes three one six one, that moves us to public hearing three one seven four. Burrell Crawford LLC, um, request for special exception.
Okay, so this special exception is requested for four nineteen Van Buren Avenue, um, which is located, um, in the South Lamar Historic District and is owned traditional neighborhood residential. There are three buildings located on property currently, and the applicant, applicant requests this special exception to allow for a residential common interest at the, at the property. There are no additional units proposed at this time. Um, the special exception is required for residential common interest development in any historic district. In this instance, the situation is already existing. Um, the units are in place and predate the current land development code. Um, and as no additional units are planned, staff does not object to the approval of an R C I D for this property. Staff is recommending approval of the special exception with two conditions. One, that it's for the plan is submitted, and the second is that, um, a copy of the covenants will be provided to the planning department prior to the filing of the condo plot.
Perfect, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the commission?
None.
Thank you, Ms. Logan.
I have one question.
Ms. Rigby?
Hey, Ben, could you just talk through what the limits would be on rebuilding structures on that property under an R C I D?
I think the request is for the application that is in place now. And any, uh, any proposed demolition would have to secure the necessary approvals from Historic Preservation Commission, and then they would have to go through a site plan process. And if they wish to build something new that would require a, a new residential common interest development, then they would have to seek that approval, which would also require a new special exception.
Okay, so the, the R C I D includes it, the structures that are there are part of the R C I D approval, not just the division of the property, correct?
That's correct.
Thanks.
So it's just going, what, my apartments?
Thank you, Ms. Ruby, um, you have any further questions or comments on that?
That's all, thanks.
All right, is there any other questions from the commission? If not, any questions or comments from those in the audience? Are there any questions or comments from those joining us online? Case number three one seven four. All right, simple enough. Unless there's any questions or comments related to this from the commission, at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
I'm moved to approve subject to the two staff conditions.
There's a motion to approve, subject to the two stated staff conditions, is there a second? There's a second, all those in favor, please vote aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners Rigby and Logan. Okay, uh, that brings us next to case number three one seven six. McCrden Development has filed a request for site plan amendment for trailhead, property located ten sixteen Molly Bar Route. Mr. Baxter.
All right, so y'all have seen this one, uh, before. Subject property is located on the south side of Molly Bar, directly west of the Depot Trail, on about a little less than an acre and a half. Uh, it's a narrow property, it's currently vacant and has a few, uh, mature trees on it. Uh, a site plan for trailhead, which was an R C I D of, uh, four duplexes and three detached units, all of them were three bedroom, was, uh, previously approved in January of twenty-four. And the applicant is proposing as an amendment to move unit location, uh, change vehicular flow, and then to, uh, change those three bedrooms to four bedrooms. Another major change is the applicant is changing first floor garages, uh, to be pull-through, as opposed to before, it was your car car like this. Um, and having a rear access alley, so there should be a point of egress for those cars in the garage at all times. Uh, additional retaining walls, uh, rerouting, uh, trail access sidewalks, and amenity pool are also added. Uh, special exception was previously granted in October of twenty-three. Uh, the proposed plan has not significantly changed in regard to that special exception, which was, uh, about building height. Um, however, that's a special exception is set to expire, uh, in April of this year. Uh, building permits have not been issued by that time. As to the use and parking requirements, four bedroom units, uh, for both attached and detached units are special exceptions. In, uh, the neighborhood residential district, uh, staff has literally just received, uh, maybe about two hours ago, uh, the special exception request. And, uh, the approval of that would be a condition, uh, of approval of this. So, this is probably a good time for y'all to talk about that, if you have any qualms about having four bedroom units, uh, at this location. A total of fifty-three parking spaces would be required for the project. Uh, there are forty-four garage spaces, potentially twenty-two, depending on what size car you have, you're not getting too, you know, like, spurbens, uh, back to back in there. And, uh, twelve parking lot spaces for a total of fifty-six are provided, uh, with the residential's, uh, development. Uh, they're also gonna need an updated special use for the R C I D, um, for this. The special exception and variance that were previously granted, uh, required that the developer construct six parking spaces, uh, for, uh, public users of the trail. And that parking is shown on the site plan, and that is in addition to the required parking that is onsite. Coverage is just at what is required building height. Allows for up to thirty-eight feet with maximum of two stories, they got that, um, special exception back in October of twenty-three, uh, to allow a third story. Architecture and building materials, uh, proposed buildings feature a shingle roof, standing seam metal roofing, wood balconies, fiber cement trim and siding, and the floor plan show two floors of living space above a garage. First sidewalks in connectivity, uh, the original special exception was approved on the condition that sidewalk from, uh, parking to the trailhead, trailhead improvements, uh, subject to final, uh, approval by staff. That include benches, bike racks, uh, a pergola, trailhead structure with signage, and, uh, a sidewalk connection from C D web, uh, to the Depot Trail with an easement to the city, uh, would be provided. And those items are shown on the site plan. And the proposed plans will require three mitigation trees. Uh, sufficient trees are proposed on landscape plan to account for that needed mitigation, but it should be called out specifically on the plan. And landscape plan indicates sufficient plantings for foundation planks, front of trees, parking lot trees, and screening for retaining walls. Uh, additional screenings and buffer plantings towards the Depot Trail will be needed to satisfy the conditions of the variance. It's close, I just need a little bit more in there. Uh, engineering has, uh, some comments related to access water and sewer and stormwater management. And staff recommends approval of the site plan with the, I'll leave it at six, seven conditions that are in your staff report. Mr. Granberry is here, if you all have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Baxter. Are there any questions or comments from the commission?
The, I have one, come in, one question, I really liked the pass through that you did, I think that makes a lot of sense. The only question that I have is on page thirty-four of your, um, packet. You know, you look like you're using bus wagons in that garage, I'm just wondering what's gonna happen when you bring a bigger truck. Where's, where's the parking going?
Good afternoon, I'm John Granberry with Granberry and Associates, the project engineer, for the record. So as far as the. So as far as the schematic that's shown on, and you referenced page thirty-four, that's probably an architectural drawing and rendering. And I'm not real sure if that is to scale or not. I do know that the width of that, the bottom floor is sufficient to house two vehicles in tandem. So I'm not a hundred percent sure what scale that is drawn to or shown to. So it's hard for me to tell that is an architectural drawing.
You feel comfortable with the parking?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
From what I remember, it's close to, you'll not get, you know, two Suburbans back to back in there. But two normal sized cars.
Or one Suburban.
One Suburban and a Honda Accord.
So what, I think Harry's question is valid, so. What, what do you do with the overflow?
Yeah, we're hopeful there is no overflow. But in the event that there is, the street, you could park adjacent to the buildings in front of your, your unit and still have an allowable pass-through lane. It's a twenty-six foot wide drive-out. So if you did park a vehicle adjacent to your garage, then, you know, you'd have plenty of room for vehicular traffic on the outside of that. But again, we don't plan on there being any overflow.
And the buffer between the property and the trail, wasn't that an issue last time?
That was, I believe that was what the variance was.
Was it variance?
Yes, that was the variance we were bringing forward.
But didn't we, didn't we put some requirements on as far as what they plant since we gave the variance?
Yes, the planting buffer needs to go the entire length. I think that Bob McSear had a pretty good plan on that, so I'll turn that way. But that was one of the, that's one of the conditions listed, and here is to have that for us, the planting buffer included.
Kirk, we don't see that this amendment substantively changes what was previously granted with the variance and the special exception. We believe that those still stand. And as those were approved, they are required to be constructed as they were approved.
Yeah, because it just, in my recollection, a lot of public comment was, you know, going and stripping out any bit of the trees, you know, that do make the trail somewhat, the nature trail, and then having access to CB web. Both of those are in there.
And I believe that there is an easement that's already been provided to CB web.
Well, to, to, university is granted actually three separate easements for connection to the trail. The easement from CB web is forthcoming. We've not received it yet, but we don't see that as a whole.
The easement would come from the land of this land, right?
Yeah, the easement.
It's the housing development.
Oh, oh, the housing development, okay.
Yeah, I just said CB web.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And the fire department's good with, if you park on the street, if you have to, you still can get through there like they're supposed to?
Yeah, you did, there, there's a sufficient room. However, we do plan again for all the vehicles to be parked in the garage. You can't control, I understand that as well. I've seen it all over town. They park wherever they want to.
Yeah, those garages are thirty-nine feet in depth, which again, you're not getting too grand like it is down there, but one, if one and one, it's size should fit that.
Two relatively large vehicles.
Yes, sir. Sure. I know we know who you are, but you want to state your name for the record?
Yeah, I'm Tom Hoaworth. We own the property on the other side of the trail, about twenty acres there, and that also has a land hook to the property that's immediately to the south of this property. It's about a third of an acre or something down there. It's just a continuous extension of this property. And I missed the, the memo when this was discussed a year ago. We were welcoming a new grandchild and I was out of town a lot. But what's happened has happened. I've, I've got a lot of questions about this. Number one, there's a lot of mature trees that are all going to come down. You're building a, a plinth surrounded by retaining walls. And on top of that, you're, as near as I can tell, not putting a drop of greenscape inside that retaining wall plinth. And you call in pervious paving, you're forty percent required open area, or I guess the little sliver that's between the rectangle that is bounded by the retaining walls and the, be the east property line that is, joins the walking trail is, is also landscape that either remains or in practical purposes would be planted. I'm also a little worried about where the water that is shown, it looks like there's a, there's a pipe that comes out to some riprap on the, on the west side of the development. And as near as I can tell, every bit of that water is heading toward the low spot, which is my third of an acre on the, on the south end of this development. And next to the swimming pool and next to the, next to the easement ramp access to the trail from, from CB web. So I just have a lot of reservations. And, you know, when, when parking spaces, public parking spaces in an open parking lot are nine feet wide by nineteen is a minimum, I don't know how thirty feet becomes two cars. Because when you put a car in a garage, you not only have to have the car in there, but you have to be able to walk around it, you have to be able to walk between them, you have to be able to walk in front and behind them. So thirty feet doesn't get you two cars, even if they're little kitty cars. So I, I have just lots of concerns about this development.
Okay. Are there any, do you have any questions, direct questions, I mean, as far as for?
Well, you know, I'm not exactly sure how the below grade stormwater detention, where exactly it drains. I know Mr. Granberry's work, I'm sure he's got that problem solved, but I don't know where it is. I assume gravity working the way it does, it's all heading toward my third of an acre.
Okay. This engineering, have you guys, do you have any good explanation as far as how this is laid out? Or if Mr. Granberry wants to talk about it?
Sure. So first, let me say, Mr. Tom, I do believe it's thirty-nine feet roughly. I do agree with you, thirty feet, be tight. So as far as the storm drain goes, there's a, a major drainage channel that is about a third of the way up the property from Molly Bar, if you're headed south toward Mr. Hoaworth's property. And that is on either side of that drainage channel, we're collecting all the water from the development and having it detained in underground stormwater detention basins, then discharging it to a pipe that is located in that existing drainage channel. Downstream, immediately downstream of that is the Oxford Housing Authority's property. And there is what, for what we can tell, Steve Rotten and I looked at it. I went out there and tried to figure out what exactly was going on on Oxford Housing Authority's property, because it appears to be some form of stormwater detention pond, but it is not. And the old plans show that it is not. However, we are trying to protect that area with an energy dissipating riprap system that, that I designed, so that all the stormwater that leaves runs through that energy dissipating riprap and then enters into an existing pipe that is on Oxford Housing Authority's property, then runs to the south and eventually does cross onto, there's a concrete paved ditch down there, right south of the Oxford Housing Authority's property. That's where it ends up going, which is right next to Mr. Hoaworth's property, but to the west of there, slightly to the west. So the majority of the stormwater, all of the stormwater really is directed to our system and then through the detention basins and then out the major drainage channel. All the while, we're required to detain so that no additional stormwater runs off our property pre-developed compared to post-developed. So that's, that's the way it's designed and that's what's, what's going on. So Mr. Hoaworth's property will not be adversely affected from stormwater discharge for sure.
All right. So you do also, you gave us some comment about the, the dimensions for the parking. It's actually closer to forty feet than thirty. You just described the drainage plan. Mr. Hoaworth, what, what other issues were you?
Well, it's just the, the, you know, the intent of, I, I mean, I've, I've used pervious paving myself. It's, it's a, it's perfectly good answer to providing some pervious area. But when you're using it to provide, you know, more than fifty percent, more than sixty percent, I don't know what percentage of, of the pervious area that's being offered as the forty percent that the city requires for this kind of development, it's, you know, it's, it's a lot of concrete. And I don't think that's, you know, it is pervious, but it's not what we're looking for when we say open area requirement.
Good, and I'm sure there's going to be, Ben, this may be an engineering question, but as far as when we calculate impervious versus pervious areas, how is it classified when we have the impervious concrete like they've got here?
So, yeah, we, we would include pervious pavers as perviousness. I mean, it's, so it works into that calculation.
That's what the code says.
That's right.
So I mean, I mean, is that, you're saying you just disagree with the code?
Well, I, I can't remember whether the code requires forty percent pervious area. I think the code requires forty percent open area. And, you know, and, and that's generally interpreted as meaning pervious. So, you know, I think that's, it's a matter of interpretation of whether you get to do your whole development, you know, a hundred percent paved, and you still count forty percent of it pervious by using pervious concrete.
Okay. Ben, I mean, did they, did they reach their, their forty percent?
It says pervious coverage is sixty percent maximum.
Is this particular plan, do we, we have the forty percent?
We do.
Okay. All right, well, so, Mr. Hoaworth, under the code, I don't, as the commission goes, we're, our job is to look at the rules and apply them. And so it's noted, for the record, that you don't agree with the way that it's calculated, but as far as we're concerned, calculations and requirements have been met. Okay, more questions or comments related to what Mr. Hoaworth was discussing from the commission? Those online, Ms. Logan, Mr. Rigby, either one of you guys have questions or comments?
No question.
No question.
Okay. Further questions or comments from those in the audience here? Questions from those joining us online? Again, we're discussing case number three one seven six. It's a request for site plan amendment to the Trailhead. Mr. Hoaworth, are you, any further discussions? Okay. No other further, no further discussion or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion at this time for case three one seven six.
Is there something that we needed to prove?
So we have.
That was added?
Yes, so. Any future commission meeting, possible, it has to be a special exception that comes for four bedrooms.
It's a condition.
It's a condition of the person. This is probably a time to say you'll have reservations about four bedrooms.
Yes. Okay, yeah, so item three for the commission, and for the record, I guess, so the recommendation was a special exception for the use of four-bedroom attached and detached units shall be approved prior to the issue of any permits. So Mr. Baxter was talking about, so he was also encouraging us as a commission, if we have any questions or comments related to this topic, now's a good time to discuss it. Everybody clear on what we're doing? So I opened the floor back up for questions or comments related to recommendation number three.
In, in the, in the previous site plan approval from the case history, was that three bedroom?
It was three bedroom.
Okay.
I do apologize for that because I thought they were four bedrooms and that had previously been approved. I found, I realized that on Friday and immediately reached out to, to Ben, you know, so here we are.
So it's there's between forty-four people and thirty. I mean, thirty, one person per bedroom.
Sure. I would like to address that. I mean, when, when there's an opportunity to sort of go with what, what the city standard is, that four, four bedrooms is, is kind of a third rail, that this doesn't look like a good opportunity to go to the third rail. I, I, I read the summary, the planner summary of it, which I presume was written before Mr. Granberry raised his question. I thought the summary said everything was three bedrooms. I didn't realize that some of these were proposed to be four bedroom units. I would definitely register a complaint against that as a neighbor.
Okay, and, and just so we're records clear, that was Mr. Ho, Mr. Hoaworth, also is just now coming. And so we will, if there is any kind of, that's the condition for this, so that, that will have to be dealt with in addition, and we're going to do it next planning commission meeting. So if you're opposed to it, that would be Tom to. Kirk, did you have any?
No, we're not going to decide that issue. I'll hold my questions to the right back. Or the meeting, but Rob wanted us to talk about it. My question is, I never asked this question, why do we, why do we limit it to three bedrooms? Why do we, yeah, I mean, why, why do we require a special exception for four bedrooms?
Well, if. You may recall at the December Planning Commission meeting, we proposed modifications to the, to the code. There are certain use types that require special exceptions for four bedroom units. There are certain use types that allow for a percentage, generally it's twenty-five percent or up to twenty-five percent four bedrooms that are allowed by right. The code process that came before you in December recommended some consistency so that way in all of those situations, you could propose twenty-five percent by right and then anything beyond that would require a special exception. I think it provides the flexibility for a mix of uses. And that provision of code was put in place when, at, at a time when we were seeing a lot of four bedroom, four bathroom rent by the bedroom, particularly in multifamily. But I think that there have been a variety of instances where the commission has approved four bedroom units in totality of a development. four-bedroom units in totality of a development and also granted them the ability to exceed. And, and usually I think it's a scale of the development, you know, I think that, that you guys have, have taken that into consideration. I think there have been a couple in Ivy, along Ivy Road more, more recently that I think were granted four-bedroom units. And they were smaller developments in scale, maybe a little bit larger than this, but I think, you know, comparable in, in, in scale versus larger complexes that come before you that are more purpose-built. So, you know, I think, you know, the, the general position of the city is, has always been to have a mix, but it also depends on the type though too, Kirk. I think, you know, when you're looking at a lot more condom, you know, RCID common interest developments or condominiums, you know, we're seeing a lot of, a lot of folks that are purchasing those for, you know, for their families though too. So, it's a.
Yeah, that, that was my question. Did we draw the line and stand there? Because typically when you get the four bedrooms, those are become rental properties because people own them by a four-bedroom company.
Yep.
So, so, so if we do approve this, you're saying that the next meeting, we vote on the four bedroom? So, do you strike number three from here on the, on the recommendations that the board has advised?
I mean, as of right now, the plan that's presented has four bedrooms on there, and in order to have that plan that's presented, there would be a special exception.
At the next meeting?
So, yeah, so if they, if they do not receive that special exception at the next meeting, then this approval would need to be amended.
I mean, they've already got a site plan approval.
Yeah.
They currently have a site plan approval.
With three bedrooms, that's correct.
With three bedrooms.
That's right.
Yeah. And so, the difference is, what we're doing is we're going to four bedroom.
And some layout.
And putting a pool here.
And some layout. Yeah, I think if they drive around, we eat that.
Right. But that just comes through the center.
That's correct.
Right.
Any further questions or comments as far as what, what we're talking about here, case three one seven six? Everybody clear on what we're doing? Any questions or comments from those joining us online, Commissioners Rigby and Logan? Hearing none, are there any questions or comments from those joining us online in general? Anybody here in the audience live have any questions or comments, further questions or comments? Hearing none, at this time, I'd entertain a motion for case three one seven six.
Second.
So, here we have a motion, subject to the seven stated staff conditions, and we have a.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please vote aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners Rigby and Logan. Did you get all that?
I voted no.
Alright. Yes, sir. Ben, could you go, Ben? Alright, that brings us to case number three one seven seven. Shivers Towing has filed a request for a special exception, and I'll let you explain for Ms. Kate.
Um, so the applicant seeks two special exceptions to allow for the construction of a commercial building for the storage and maintenance of tow trucks on this site. One special exception to allow for the use of a property as a vehicle repair and maintenance facility. The second special exception for the proposed building height. The property is currently used by Shivers Towing, the applicant, to park and store vehicles, its own traditional neighborhood business, and the proposed new building would front North Lamar Boulevard. The applicant also plans to install fencing and screening and landscaping to shield the neighboring gas tank storage area from the street. So, I'll talk about the special exception for the use first. Vehicle repair and maintenance facilities are special exceptions in the TMB district. This is an existing use on the site and granting this special exception will not be a change of use for the property. Vehicles will not be accepted for repair. The new building will house the Shivers vehicles which are used for towing, and there will not be storage on-site for damaged vehicles or vehicles to be repaired. And then for item B, the special exception for building height, typically buildings in the TMB are required to be at least two and up to a maximum of three stories. The proposed one-story building will be thirty-two foot, four inches in height as it's specified in the building plans, which is to accommodate the towing vehicles used by the Shivers operation. While it's technically one-story, at around thirty-two feet in height, the building is taller than most typical one-story commercial buildings and will give the appearance of a one and a half or two-story building on the site. The construction of the proposed building will approve the aesthetics of the existing lot and put a building on a site that's currently vacant and is a vet gap in the streets, in the streetscape. The proposed building is compatible with the neighborhood and uses similar materials to other new buildings in close proximity on North Lamar. So, staff is recommending that approval of both special exceptions with four conditions. I will note that items three and four relate to fencing material and a landscape buffer for the screening of the gas tanks, which are also on the site for neighboring use. We did receive a landscaping plan today showing that screening, and that'll be included. This still will require a site plan, so all of that will be evaluated at that time as well, but the landscaping plan provided today was much more robust on that screening. So, if anyone has questions for me or for John, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Kate. Are there any questions from the commission regarding case number three one seven seven? Alright, are there any questions from the two commissioners joining us online?
No question.
How does this compare to the other buildings in this area, this addition?
Um, I can answer it, or maybe John, you want to? I mean, North Lamar is pretty varied in this section. We've got Savannah Square going up, that's two-story, and then you've got the Morgan Buildings a little bit further down. Right now, this site is vacant and the building next door, which is the gas company, is one story. So, you know, I think this fits into the.
Comparable.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, comparable.
Yeah, I would say that putting a building here will sort of scale this site a little bit closer to what's going on as North Lamar is changing, definitely.
I would agree.
Thank you.
Right, right now, it's basically a parking lot for these tow trucks, and at least we're going to be housing them. So, we're considering it an improvement.
Yeah, I would agree, especially with all the houses being built at the Lamar, it's definitely kind of an eyesore to people that live there, and I think this is a move in the right direction for sure.
Yes, I would agree as well. Yeah, and I'll say something, I guess, just to comment, the, in regards to the two-story requirements, we have several people come before the commission with issues and gripes about that, and I would just say that I, I think that this application embodies what I, at least what I envisioned as a hardship. They, they were there long, I don't know how long they've been around, but they've been around for a long time, the Shivers family. And so, this is, right now, I grab a parking lot, and so, they're gonna try to fit into the code. The height's gonna be almost the height, basically of two stories, and they're trying to fit these gigantic trucks in there. So, to me, I guess for the record, this is actually a hardship and is offering to improve. And I don't think they really have to do this. If I'm wrong, Mike, correct me, but I think they're just doing this, I think, for the betterment of the community and to improve the look of their property in that area. So, I guess kudos to them for doing that. So, any further questions or comments from the commission, from those joining us online? Ms. Logan, Mr. Rigby, you guys good?
Yes, we're good.
I'm good.
All good.
Alright, any questions or comments from those in the audience joining us today? Any questions from the audience joining us online? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion at this time for case number three one seven seven.
I have my commission to approve both requested special exceptions with the four conditions.
There's a motion to approve both special exceptions, subject to the four stated staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, all those in favor, please vote aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners Rigby and Logan. It is approved. Ben, did you get your count?
Sir?
Did you get the count?
Thank you.
That brings us to case number three one seven eight. Blackburn Group, Mr. Ben?
No, I think that was, it's three one seven nine.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I had to cover it, apologize. Excuse me, case number three one seven nine, Stuart Marlowe, filed a request for special exception, et cetera. Go ahead, Mr. Ben.
Ben, so, this is, and the application's actually come before the commission, although it's slightly different. At the time, three special exceptions were requested. This time, there's also a variance that's included, so we have three special exceptions, a special exception for the stormwater design requirements, special exception for ground floor residential as provided in section two point six point nine, a special exception from the build-to-line maximum in section two point six point nine, and then a variance from the outside storage and disposal areas of section five point five, point four, point three of the code. So, the property's approximately, it's just under one and a half acres, it's located off of Highway six west and Old Taylor Road. The applicant received approval in May for similar requests, but there are different, there are several modifications to the site plan that now includes a total of five buildings, one two-story mixed-use building. One of the buildings is a two-story mixed-use building, therefore residential buildings additionally. The development proposal consists of twelve residential units. The commercial space is just about twenty-one hundred square feet. The applicant seeks approval for the request as we discussed them before. So, the special exception related to the stormwater design, the fieldhouse site plan, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the, the fieldhouse site plan, it's the subject of case thirty one eighty, the next, the next item. The detention basin proposed to meet the city's stormwater management requirements. The special exception would allow vertical interior walls of the detention basin as allowed in section ninety-eight, one eighteen, L five, which says that a, by special exception, detention basins may use vertical interior walls. The maximum height of these walls in the detention pond is eight feet, built in four-foot high segments. Parts of a wall below the surface of the ground, ground surface shall not be included in the measurement of the height. A safety ledge, a minimum of three feet wide, shall separate the segments. Engineering staff supports the special exception for this request, and they included two conditions of approval with this. As for the ground floor residential, the applicant's proposing five buildings, four fully residential, one mixed-use, with approximately twenty-one hundred square feet. A ground floor commercial is generally required, however, the development where this is being proposed does contain a mix of commercial, and the site situated between an existing office building and a multifamily residential building, we believe that this, this use would be in keeping with the development as a whole or the area that's around it. So, staff recommends approval of the special exception with the two conditions noted in the report. As for the build-to-line maximum, the front yard, build-to-line requirement is, the building should be situated fifteen feet, no closer than fifteen feet from the property line and not further away than fifty-eight, and in instances where you exceed that, that could be requested up to a hundred and fifty feet by special exception. The applicant is seeking this special exception to be beyond fifty-eight feet. Again, as was previously recommended, staff supports the placement of the building, especially because they're using existing infrastructure in the site, parking lot is already there, so, so we do support, support that with the two conditions in, in your report. And then finally, the, the proposal for the dumpster enclosure is located in the front yard. The code dictates that those should be in the side or the rear yard to minimize visibility. However, in this instance, there are some severe topographical changes from the, I guess it would be from the south to the north, so from the rear of the property towards Highway six, it, it actually slips pretty severely. And so, in conversations with the environmental services, the engineer has actually determined that, and the environmental services director have determined that the, probably the ideal location for this dumpster is to be where it is situated right now. Staff does have an additional condition of approval for this, which would be, it's two, it's approval for the plan as submitted, but then also that evergreen shrubs are provided on the backside of the dumpster enclosure. They have to be planted four feet minimum height as required by code. They're not indicated on the landscaping plan and they should be, and that would also help screen it from Highway six. So, these are the requests that are before you. Staff supports all four of them with the conditions. Jeff Williams is here, is happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ben.
Sure.
Any questions or comments from the commission?
Which building is a commercial will be in?
It's on the, the east, sorry, the westernmost side, so if you're looking at the plan on, in front of you, it'd be on the left side of the page.
Building three?
It's building five.
Five.
That's right.
This is for the engineering department, and it's more of a curiosity than a, than a problem, but why do we, why is there like a special exception required for this, the stormwater design in relation to that, the first special exception, for vertical interior walls?
Yeah, generally speaking, you don't want vertical interior walls for stormwater changes and some structural issues and erosion and stuff, but on a case-by-case basis, we allow it, this is just because it's higher up here at the site. We also did it for Lamar, you know, in a second, I know, Chico saw. But we don't like it just as a general design principle, but we did make, that's why we put it in as a special exception, just so we could judge it on a case-by-case basis.
And so, since there, it's gonna be located, I think it was building five, I'm looking at the map, down here.
It's like the southwest.
Southwest, okay. Are they gonna have to, is it gonna be original cut for those retaining walls? Are they gonna dig in the ground or are they gonna be building that up and backfilling it to make it?
I believe that they're probably cutting to do that, but I'll let Jeff answer that question.
Majority has to cut. I'm sorry.
Majority has to cut. We did a little fill at the top to ensure we had the right capacity, but the majority of it's in a cut.
Alright, perfect, 'cause that, to me, that's the, I think that's one of the issues about having the wall worried about the.
That's right.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Alright, further questions or comments? I actually had a, another quick question about the storage area with the, with the trash receptacles. And this, again, maybe a curiosity more so than anything, but the reason that it's gotta be put in that spot was one of the reasons, because there's, I would think there would be, if we have new pavement, maybe not as strong, maybe not as settled, that's where it would be right now, so there's big trucks going through that. I think they would put the concrete or put pavement under, probably under stress and potholes, et cetera, versus having it somewhere where it's been established. Was that part of the reason that it was needed to be where it's located?
I think so. I mean, Jeff, you.
There was a lot of issues with that location. Turnaround issues, if you go up the top of the hill, it takes a lot of turnaround, they went back up over a hundred and fifty feet, or eighty feet maybe. That spot, it lined up with that drive, so we can pull in, back out, and it does minimize the amount that those garbage trucks are on the interior of the site.
Okay, that was my thought, but I think for the mayor and board of aldermen, they may want, they want a better reason, so, perfect, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? We went to case number three one seven nine. Any questions or comments from the commissioner joining us online?
None, no que, none.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from those joining us here in the audience today? Any questions from those joining us online? I don't think we even have anybody else online doing it.
No, it's just JR, Yolanda, and us.
Okay, alright, hearing no further questions or comments, is there a motion for case number three one seven nine? And do we need to do each separate special exception, those approved?
I think that that would be best, if we did A, B, C, D.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion for special exception A, which is regarding the stormwater detention standards, section five point seven point nine. Is there a motion? Alright, was there any staff comment? There's- Okay, are you proposing a motion?
Approving to get that through.
There's a motion to approve, as stated, this is special exception, section A, regarding stormwater detention standards. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor, please vote aye. Aye. Commissioner Rigby?
Aye.
Perfect. Commissioner Rigby?
Aye.
Thank you. It is approved. That takes us to special exception under B, and this is regarding to the build-to maximum line. Is there a motion? There's a motion to approve special exception regarding the build-to maximum line. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor, vote aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It is approved. Regarding section C, a special exception is provided regarding ground floor residential. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve.
Staff conditions.
As stated with staff recommendations. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. All those in favor, please vote aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, it is approved. Lastly, we have section D, a variance from five five four three, outside storage and disposal. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, subject to the conditions.
There's a motion to approve, subject to the stated conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor, please vote aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, it is approved. That takes us to public hearing, case number three one eight zero, and this is the same property, Mr. Marlowe, for site plan amendment to the fieldhouse. Go ahead, Mr. Ben.
Yes, sir, it's the same property, one and a half acres, same location. There was a previous approval for now these special exceptions and the variance that were granted. The applicant is proposing, excuse me, the applicant, especially, parking, I'm sorry, the parking for this requires two space per three-bedroom unit plus one space for guests for the, the three bedrooms, sorry, two spaces per three-bedroom unit plus one guest space per unit, excuse me, one space per the three hundred square feet of the commercial. So a total of, it's actually fifty-nine spaces is required for this particular site. Okay, so that is, I believe, one more than what was provided in the site plan. There's fifty-eight that's there, and there's a condition of approval associated with that. The coverage in the suburban center is eighty percent. The proposed site plan shows sixty-seven, total sixty-seven, so they're well within compliance. The structure height is limited to fifty feet, not more than four stories, and the proposed plans reach forty-six and a half feet. And so we're, we're good there. Architecture, materials of the building are consistent with what's required in the land development code. The proposed site plan includes foundation plantings and edge, and edge plantings as required. The plants in the proposed parking lot in front of trees all comply with the requirements. The proposal includes pedestrian sidewalks throughout the site. The site is connected to neighboring offices through an existing private road and drive. Engineering did provide comments related to access water sewer and stormwater, and staff recommends approval with the seven conditions listed in, in your report. And I do want to, I do want to note that one of the, one of the items that would be required is that A, an additional parking space is provided, and I think that that was, that was one of the conditions that was listed as part of it. So I think fifty-nine spaces, Jeff, are required, and there's one space that is pretty close to being in compliance and could, could count, and, and so we can work with you on that. And so we just need to make sure that that is addressed. Now, one point, one point I do want to make is that, you know, it depends on the commercial space and what is, what is to be used, what is to be used there. If it's an office space, that requirement may actually be a little bit less than, I think, the seven spaces that are required for the commercial space. So they could technically be in compliance, we just don't know who the end user is at this time, but nonetheless, we, we do have a condition of approval to at least make sure that the proposal complies with the parking requirements.
Oh, Ben, I was gonna say, on the sheet, I could, I think you're ten off, so forty-eight and forty-nine versus fifty-eight, fifty-nine?
Thank you. Very well, fifty. Yeah, it was forty-nine, and they had forty-eight, excuse me.
Yeah, just for the record. Okay, is that, are you, you good then, or are we opening up the floor for questions and comments now?
Yep.
I've got a quick, quick one. Where, where are the rest of the parking spots? Because if you count, we're not anywhere near forty or fifty for that matter. Okay.
Yeah, they show up on the site plan. If you, if you look on sheet, the actual site, site plan sheet, sheet C two point zero, you'll see that there are building three are both two-part garages. Building one has two-part garages. Building four consists of-
The two SP, two spaces.
That's right.
Okay. Trying to find how wide that is, and anything I'm able to get in there like we were talking about a while ago? You remember how wide the garage?
I can't recall.
I'm trying to pull it. Okay. Alright, any further questions or comments? By the way, Ben, I've got twelve stated staff conditions here. I know you said seven, but y'all do have, you do want the twelve that we've got.
Twelve, yes.
And regarding parking? I was making sure that you had your, you were talking about, you guys wanted to have the forty-ninth spot. I don't see that as a requirement, though.
I think that that was noted up, above.
So that will be included?
Just a quick clarification. So this is twenty-six regular parking, twenty garage parking, forty-six total.
Yeah, the way it's actually on the sheet in the, in the site data table, it's listed incorrectly. If you count them, it's actually forty-eight spaces provided, forty-nine's actually required.
Have you guys had any conversations with, with Mayo Mallett, the neighboring property? This may be a question for the engineer, but has there been discussions about using sort of the parking lot right next to y'all?
I'm sorry?
You're the engineer on this project, right? Has there been discussions about any further needs for parking spilling over into the Mayo Mallett area?
No, everything, trying to contain everything on site. There's another special about shared use as far as that I'm aware of now. Other than the technical labor, they have discussed that.
Very good, alright. Any other questions or comments from the commission here?
I guess, the question I have is, Jeff, can you find another parking place? When we just dealt with one, that we didn't know if it was gonna be an additional or not, twelve parking places. I mean, I, I think that's a little overboard, you know?
There's a couple of spots, one spot I'd rather not put in there, it's called Red Village, I think a lot of, but there's several places I could even put compact in there or something. But I think there's plenty of places to give room.
I think they're there.
Any further questions or comments from those here? Comments from those online?
None.
No.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from those here in the audience today? If there are none, I would entertain a motion at this time. There are twelve stated staff conditions, there's one additional condition regarding the parking spot to require that there be forty-nine. If there's a motion at this time, we'd entertain it.
That move that we grant the request for site plan approval with the additional thirteen staff conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. There's a motion to approve, subject to the twelve stated, thirteen total staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second? All those in favor, please vote aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It is approved. I'll at this time entertain the most important motion of the day, if there is one to adjourn. There's a motion, there's a second. All those in favor, please vote aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We adjourn, thank you.